Kirkpatrick. Babcock. Reed. Morris.
Here. Two of the consentors in the following items may be approved in their entirety by the board upon motion made, seconded, and then passed by majority. Any member may request a separate vote on any or all items contained in the consent.
Wilson. Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Item number four is a rational motion for taking the board.
At door, you can see the door's open. As with any construction errors in chain doors, it's embodied as installed very well. Door works very. The final walkthrough door will be put in tomorrow. Had to delay putting it in because wanted to paint it, make sure the paint dried and stuff, so we can start working against the door and immediately come off. So that's supposed to be hung tomorrow. With that. Fire marshal came by today for their annual walkthrough inspection. Everything was really good. We had one ceiling tile missing. War and helium tank wasn't changed. Chain around helium tank. And then the things that is on agenda item later, we were already working on is changing some of the electric stuff and addressing some of the issues out in the I building. But some of those were, are going to be on the report, but they were things we were already doing. He just, because they were in the middle of correcting those, they had to be notated. But other than that, once I get their report, submit our action plan and we should be good. He was very impressed with how much everything was right, that we didn't have the normal fire hazards around that lots of schools did, like long extension cords and multiple daisy chain power strips and things like that. It was just, I mean, very, very minor, so very good report. He won't be back for two more years. Two and a half, whenever they come back. So he did give me some good news, since we're working on bond issue stuff. They've added two people in the state fire marshal's office to begin to work on plans. So once we get bond passed, architect submits plans, we may have a professor turn around in three to six months. That's happening right now. So that was some very good news from him today. And that's all I have.
All right. On testing, we are, this week, we will be finished with our MAPS testing, which is already assessments for our students, so our teachers can identify areas of strength and weaknesses. Kind of gives us an idea of where they are in preparation for the state testing. Also helps them throughout the year just to get better in the skills that they may lack. So we will finish that up by this Friday and then beginning April 1st, we will start our state testing. The week we come back from spring break, there will be papers sent home, making sure parents know the schedules and what's going on and to please get them extra sleep and make sure they're eating good and all of that, so that they're prepared for testing. Leads straight into our school report card this year, which I am very happy compared to where we were and where we're going. Looks really well. We still have to work in some areas, but I'm still impressed. I put beside you some colored copies, but there is also in the documents, Mr. Miller put a copy that shows you the webpage and everything in it as well. But if you look at the Freedom Elementary School, our overall grade on the very front page of that, at the bottom, it shows you is a B. And it shows you the different points that are earned and what's possible for each area that we are graded on. Academic achievement, we made a C. Academic growth, we made an A. That is huge. That's saying that our kids are growing and they're getting where they need to be. So hopefully next year, that academic achievement will go up even higher because of that. Chronic absenteeism, we have a B. So we definitely need some work on that because that's something that if we can talk to parents and make them realize that it's important that your kids are here, try to make appointments after school or on days we're out of school, those types of things will help us a lot with that. But I'm very, very proud of where we are on this. The back of this just shows you the charts where we stand compared to the state. On everything that we have a score on, you can see that we are above the state in percentages. So that again looks, looks pretty good. I'm pretty proud of that, so. And then the high school, we do not have a grade. Has to do with our graduation rates, but we do have some individual grades. Our academic achievement is a C. The graduation one is where we don't have a grade, which affects our overall. Chronic absenteeism, we have an A in that, which is good. The one after that, cutoff.
Post-secondary.
Post-secondary opportunities. And it was, we said the year an A.
B.
It was a B, yes. So overall, we're doing real well. We're showing lots of growth. We just need to keep going in that direction and I think, I think we can't care, so I'm very proud of that, even though it says I'm Michael Wong.
That it good?
That's it.
All right. Item five, this is general A, presentation of the annual high school dropout report.
We've learned some new things with this report through the report card. And I don't know if the state even knew until we started calling that the way we were doing things was not the way they want us to do it three years ago in, like a point exchange student, where it's, will be marked as a kid who finished up the year. They can't graduate from our schools. But, so we've always been marking them as they finished up the year. But now federally, they're counting against our graduation rate. And with ESA, that kind of changed that rule on how that's notated. So now we have to work the process of getting the dropout report, because they count them as a dropout against you federally. State doesn't, the federal does. But this year, we don't have any dropouts. We won't have any on our report. There is one, but it's not a dropout per se. It's just the way they're now calculating, because that student would have had two freshman years. So next year, they will count against us, or this year, they'll count against us, but the next year, we'll get credit back for them because of being what they would consider a fifth-year senior, even though this was a student that no one knew had a four, had two freshman years, until they came to us and we started digging into this report. So we have no dropouts, but federally, we'll be counted as one dropout. It's really weird right now and they're on all that, but.
It's different with the state, though, than it is with the federal government?
It is, and the big change is up because of ESA now. The Every Student Succeed Act, the federal version, is making, making some definitions change, where under, not yet left behind, it was a different way of calculating it. But the state's retraining on how to notate that now. And we now know how to, we're supposed to mark those students as immigrated instead of finished up the year, which no one has until basically this week, so.
All right, the end of discussion of possible action concerning OKSDE school designation.
This kind of goes along with the dropout report, graduation rate, school report card, all of the same things. Got notified personally by Joey Hoffmeister that we will be designated as a school called, again, new because of ESA, Comprehensive Support and Improvement. But there's an appeal process because the data used is incorrect, plus the problems with websites, the way we're supposed to go and correct data. And then there's an appeal process because of small graduation reports, small girls. So as of today, I found out that I need to go to the state department on Friday in front of the appeals committee and plead our case and say, please don't designate us for poor data, because we really do have a good graduation rate. And I've got all the justification as to why. No, this is the first year this is happening and no one really knows how that's, this process works. So I won't know anything until after that, that meeting. If by chance, they don't approve our appeal, we will have a lot of work. Michelle and I getting some surveys, a lot of paperwork to fill out. But it does come with money. At the moment, they're estimating it to start with $50,000 and it could go higher, depending on all these appeals process. So, but we, if you look at the actual data, we should have never been on this. The data is wrong and they're swaying their calculation. So we should have never been designated.
So you need to make a motion approving the.
There's not really a motion. It's just, it was more of a presentation, but without knowing what this process was when I wrote the agenda, I don't know what that information was today.
Okay. Okay. So no action?
Yeah, there's no action.
Okay. All right, the C then is discussion of possible action concerning private rental of school buses for May 22nd, 2019, going forward to.
I was contacted by a community member asking if he's going to have to do farm tours for a USDA grant he has.
Who was it?
Terry Hotson.
Oh, okay.
And he asked if he could rent our two mini buses and drivers to shuttle 30 to 40 people around for the farm tour from nine to one-ish on the 22nd of May. And as with any use of school facilities, that's a board approval decision.
Joey, your recommendation?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, he's willing to pay for the time.
Is it legal for us to do that?
Yes, yes.
Now, if we're done for the summertime funding program, they'll, they use a freedom school bus?
Yeah, the chamber, I think, pays for all of, everything related to all of that.
That's it. They're going to pay, reimburse us for, okay.
They used to use the buses for the back tours. I don't know if they still do that.
Make a motion.
Possibly.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Item D is discussion of possible action concerning bond, excuse me, bond project schedule.
In your docs, you'll see your proposed schedule. It's after the report card. I worked with our bond finance guys and our architect, Jim Clayton James, Kerr. Keep going, keep going. They both reviewed this. It's kind of the plan of action of what, between now and bond vote and possibly money in the bank, of all the things that would be coming up. One decision that I do need to know, confirmed with both James and Jordan, they could make a public meeting for March 26th or April 4th. April 4th is their preferred day, because it works better on their schedules. They could make the 26th work if we want a later date. I just need to kind of have some proposals to see what works in their schedules.
I don't have any problem with any of the dates myself.
Is there anything else I would like to add or move or change or?
No. Uh-oh.
After the bond project schedule, you'll see the cost allocations sheets.
You'd like them to live with my taxes?
It's a, I think, $12 per hundred is pretty affordable.
Mine'd be $12. So I'm moving, go ahead and approve the proposed schedule?
Which date for the public meeting? Which date for the public meeting?
Which date? The PBD?
Because you'll have to be there, yeah. April 4th or the March 26th?
Oh, here. Well, we might as well get it out just as soon as possible. Go with the 26th. March 26th.
And they prefer the 4th, right?
The, both of the architect and vendor, and bond guy, Jordan, the 4th works better in their schedules, but they can make the 26th work if we want it. You force them to be.
I mean, anybody.
I mean, is there any reason?
Before we make the motion, let's discuss which date everybody gets best with.
We're fine with 26th if needed, but they prefer the 4th.
They can for sure be here both on the 4th if the 26th is going to be a problem for them. The 4th would probably be the better deal.
Okay. Well, then I'll make the motion with the date of the 4th.
Second, then we'll see.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Item E is discussion of possible action concerning proposed strategic plan. That's the item B after that, after what you just said. Now, on the structural things, some of these could be, just being done simultaneously and correct, like the lighting in the windows and.
All of that is in the bond, so.
Now, for that, dealing with structural, is this, this is just, this is what we're doing?
Basically, because a lot of it will depend once the bond passes. When we get a general contractor here, we'll know a lot more firm timelines once a lot of things come.
And if we get all the money we want to accomplish all these things, we should be able to get it done fairly quick, I would think. Even the new building, it don't, if we're wanting a metal building, then they can put them up in a week or two.
The estimate, the few contractors I've talked to about that project, both have estimated six to nine months to build that building. I mean, that's what, I just had, give me an estimated timeframe.
Well, I was talking about putting up the building itself.
The structure itself, yeah.
Okay, inside of it, you know.
They're telling completion be done out six to nine months.
Okay.
This strategic plan here, I guess, I mean, this could all change regarding whether the bond passes or not, correct?
Oh, very much so.
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah, we ain't got the money, we ain't going to do none of it.
Right, yeah.
We got to back up and punt us. Just a second. Go a different direction.
Well, this, this is thing we've already talked about.
Just the order, and which is going to get done.
There's not necessarily the order, I guess. This is basic, that's the overall game plan. Okay. I'll tell you. Prove it. And you still reading through it, I guess?
Yeah. Lot fine with that before.
Okay. Go ahead and make a motion to approve it. He determined?
One second.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Babcock.
Yes.
Morris.
Item number six is facilities, discussion of possible action concerning gym handrails.
You've got some drawings in your packet right after that strategic plan. Been working on a couple different options to put handrails in. Doing everything we can to try to make them attractive, affordable, and meet ADA requirements. The first plan, I don't know which report, they're in your book, but one that looks like hooks. Depending on which way we go with this, this is probably the most affordable option. Shane and I've had a few discussions. There's some concern about the rigidity of using 14-gauge pipe, or tubing, rather. I've learned that difference in this project, difference in tubing and pipe. The least expensive way is, there's one version of this, these would be the least expensive. I could give them maybe for about 26 bucks a piece and we can paint them ourselves and we'll be done. I've had OCI, which is the prisoners. They have the ability to make this out of 40 ga, uh, 40 gauge, scheduled 40 structural pipe. But the cost just for that part, I'm waiting for a revised quote, because this has changed from the first time I've sent it to them. The original price was $58 a piece to make them out of structural 40, 40, not gauge, schedule 40. Pipe, I've asked them.
Which design?
The one that looks like a hook, second design.
Make them out like a hook, okay.
Yeah. So they're, I'm waiting on them to get back to me on what that version, so far I haven't been able to find, but it wouldn't, instead of two inch, it'd be inch and a half. Schedule 40. They also have the ability to powder coat. I've asked them to give me the quote on that as well. We've gotten a quote from a guy in Ena that can powder coat the tubing version we have for about 40 bucks a piece. So, and I talked to another guy today about electro painting. I'm trying to quote what they do on the lockers.
I'm surprised.
Yeah. He thought, he thought for the price that we were getting, around $40 to have them powder coated was, was a better option. It'll last longer than what he was in his version. The second option there is the continual pipe. I had Davey take this, which misses a lot of assumptions with Davey doing a lot of the work. He estimated that he could probably build one of these one a day, if no one was messing with him and hadn't stopped for anything else. Material costs, the material right there, it's on the back of it, you see the cost that he got from the materials. So it'd be pretty labor intensive.
I just think that the center one would fit better, in my opinion.
Talking about this design?
the bond and then go on from there, in my opinion. Rather waste time talking about the handrails.
Can they work?
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
What kind of pipe material is this one made out of?
Schedule forty.
This is the schedule forty one, next to, to make it on the back?
Okay. That's why the material costs are so expensive.
Okay. I, yeah, I'll flick it that.
So what's the new motion?
I'm sorry? Yeah.
I was making sure.
Shane made the motion.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item B is discussion of possible action concerning ag, electric, and concrete.
Rough guessments right now, finishing out the electrical, not doing everything I want to have down, but addressing some of the issues that, again, the fire marshal was doing in repairing stuff we had to move because of the midori and it'd be, without material, we're looking at right around twenty-five hundred dollars, without material, just in time to install some plugs and finish, finish up while we've got it there. Then the concrete, now that we're, we've tabled the handrails, I'd like to go ahead and turn Davey's on getting the pad poured in front and Davey, pretty sure he can do it, we don't have a clue on cost of concrete at the moment and how much, but he's, Mr. Davey's already started preliminary working on that.
Entryway ramp to get into the building, we were talking about?
I'm sorry?
The entryway ramp to get buses into the building?
Yeah.
In front of the overhead door?
Yeah.
Sure picked a fine day to take it out.
I was surprised too.
Man, I hope I get that done one day.
So if y'all are fine with that, going ahead and putting a ramp and getting that done, like I said, I know twenty-five hundred on roughly electric plus materials. And we haven't got a quote back on, from lock on materials, that's why we don't know the material cost. And then let Davey get that done hopefully as quick as we can, depending upon weather, because we're coming into that rainy season.
Three or four yards?
How big a pad?
I don't have any specs. I know I've talked to Davey about it, but we haven't got to that point yet of how far the approach. Main thing, we've had a conversation with making sure we got the footer poured first and timing in the building. I mean, this is, that's, this is way out of my area, so.
That's gotta be done.
Yeah.
Can't use it like it is.
Right.
Do you have a recommendation on who to use for concrete?
He, Mr. Davey can do it.
He's gonna do it?
Yes.
Actually himself and do all that?
Where to get concrete from, you know, we haven't talked that far. Who, I think that'll depend on price of who can actually drive it, from what I've been told, we pay a premium for the drive, drive time to get a truck here.
It's on the top.
I don't know that for sure.
We could get Alba or Woodbury maybe.
I'll make the motion to get them started.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item seven is personnel, A, is discussion of possible actions concerning superintendent travel schedule.
Obviously something that's not on here, since I found out about today, it's Friday, Friday's meeting at Oklahoma City, on the fifteenth. And then if we get approved, we won't have, I won't, I won't have to go and Michelle won't have to go the week of the twenty-sixth to twenty-ninth. That's just a one-day deal. I won't have to go there if we get ours approved. If we do, if we don't, then we have to attend back.
Crime, scene, investigation, chain?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, yeah. I think they could have chose a better acronym.
Yeah.
That joke's been made a few times now. You're not the first one.
I'm not the only one that picked it for me.
Yeah.
So it's, you got like one of the four days you can go to?
It's actually all five, but I've got a conflict on the twenty-seventh already. And there's something else on the twenty-seventh, I forgot what it was. That's every, that happens pretty much every month, the last Wednesday of the month. April's is in Alba.
So these asterisks on the side says, will only attend one day?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you realize it wasn't an all-week thing, it was just one day, we just hadn't...
That's what I think he was asking, so you're going one.
I go one and I go one.
That's correct, yeah.
I go for days.
You good? No problem? We... We need to, motion to approve?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
One second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item two is acknowledge the board, acknowledge whether the board return to open session, I make the motion.
Nope.
That's right, I'm sorry. Eight forty-five, yeah. Executive session, minutes of hours announcements, another thing discussed was item B.
Yes.
I had no other thinking. See is discussion of possible action concerning employment of the employees listed on appendix B for the two thousand nineteen, full year.
It's my recommendation that we re-employ the employees on appendix.
I'll make the motion that we take is...
Recommendation?
Recommendation, thank you. I got lost.
Is there a second?
One second. Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number eight is new business.
Had something come up today. One of our athletes has an opportunity to have a college visit over spring break, but it would require out-of-state travel. Being that it's non-state travel, require board approval to take the vehicle to Missouri for college visit, program of business.
Who would do it?
I'm sorry?
Who would do it?
Coach Wood, Coach Jeremy.
I like the motion. Through it. I'll second it.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number eight is new business.
Had something come up today. One of our athletes has an opportunity to have a college visit over spring break, but it would require out-of-state travel. Being that it's non-state travel, require board approval to take the vehicle to Missouri for college visit, program of business.
Who would do it?
I'm sorry?
Who would do it?
Coach Wood, Coach Jeremy.
I like the motion. Through it. I'll second it.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Have the writers, we got anything to sign?
Yes.
Bless you.
What do you have, Mr. Long?
Yes, the, 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 this year based on last year's test. You don't get, you don't get a grade. They have to come to these...
Mass contract. Didn't try to get done last time.
Cause they redo everything.
Today is the...
We're in the patent for last year's.
Yes.
For the prom?
Yes.
I suppose that Joe's invitation to the...
Proms that year, they're gonna use it.
Yes.
Well, that's funny, she didn't put that there. It's April thirteenth.
I'm gonna have to get it right.
Take it thirteen.
Yes, I know.
Sorry.
Number ten, then those two are during. I make the motion during eight forty-eight.
I'll second that one.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number six is discussion of possible action concerning gym handrails.
We've got some drawings in your packet right after that strategic plan. Been working on a couple different options to put handrails in, doing everything we can to try to make them attractive, affordable, and meet ADA requirements. The first plan, I don't know which order they're in your book, but one that looks like hooks. Depending on which way we go with this, this is probably the most affordable option. Shane and I've had a few discussions, there's some concern about the rigidity of using fourteen gauge pipe, or tubing rather. I've learned that difference in this project, difference in tubing and pipe. The least expensive way is, there's one version of this, these would be least expensive, I could get them maybe for about twenty-six bucks a piece and we can pay them ourselves and we'll be done. I've had O C I, which is the prisoners, they have the ability to make this out of forty gaug, uh, not forty gauge, schedule forty structural pipe. But the cost just for that part, I'm waiting for a revised quote because this has changed from the first time I've sent it to them. The original price was fifty-eight dollars a piece to make them out of structural forty, forty, no, not gauge, schedule forty. Pipe, I've asked them...
Which design?
The one that looks like a hook, second design.
Like they might like the hook, okay.
Yeah. So they're, I'm waiting on them to get back to me on what that version, so far I haven't been able to find, but it would instead of two inch, it'd be inch and a half, schedule forty. They also have the ability to powder coat, I've asked them to give me a quote on that as well. We've gotten a quote from a guy in Ena that can powder coat the tubing version we have for about forty bucks a piece. So, and I talked to another guy today about electro painting, quote unquote, they do them in lockers.
Lockers, boy.
Yeah. He thought, he thought for the price that we were getting, around forty dollars to have them powder coated was, was a better option, it'll last longer than what he was in his version. The second option there is the continual pipe. I had Davey take this, which misses a lot of assumptions, Davey doing a lot of the work. He estimated that he could probably build one of these one a day if no one was in, messing with him, hadn't stopped for anything else. Material cost, the material right there, it's on the back of it, you see the cost that he got from that materials. So it'd be pretty labor intensive.
I just think the, the center one would fit better, in my opinion.
Talking about this design?
Yes, yeah. Because you're gonna have one handrail in each aisle, whereas the other ones, if you do it right, you're gonna have one on each side all the way up through four rails. And I, I don't, I'd have to see some other pipe, but that pipe that, that you had, the one of, you know, maybe, I know what that pipe is and it will bend, yeah, it, I mean, it's, it'll bend.
You talking about that two inch?
Yes.
One of the things we, into remedy that, one of the, we worked with, it's not Welker, that makes the pipe, I can't remember the brand, but there is the ability to slide inside of it. A one and seven eighths will fit directly inside of it, it's not, you saw the, that, they were using it as just a small piece.
Right. My deal is it's on the bond list, so why don't we just wait and see what happens with the bond and then go on from there, in my opinion. Rather waste time talking about the handrails.
Can they work?
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
What kind of pipe material is this one made out of?
Schedule forty.
This is the schedule forty one, next to, to make it on the back?
Okay. That's why the material costs are so expensive.
Okay. I, yeah, I'll flick it that.
So what's the new motion?
I'm sorry? Yeah.
I was making sure.
Shane made the motion.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number six is discussion of possible action concerning ag, electric, and concrete.
Rough guessments right now, finishing out the electrical, not doing everything I want to have down, but addressing some of the issues that, again, the fire marshal was doing in repairing stuff we had to move because of the midori and it'd be, without material, we're looking at right around twenty-five hundred dollars, without material, just in time to install some plugs and finish, finish up while we've got it there. Then the concrete, now that we're, we've tabled the handrails, I'd like to go ahead and turn Davey's on getting the pad poured in front and Davey, pretty sure he can do it, we don't have a clue on cost of concrete at the moment and how much, but he's, Mr. Davey's already started preliminary working on that.
The entryway ramp to get into the building, we were talking about?
I'm sorry?
The entryway ramp to get buses into the building?
Yeah.
In front of the overhead door?
Yeah.
I'm sure picked a fine day to take it out.
I was surprised too.
I'm like, man, I hope I get that done one day.
So if y'all are fine with that, going ahead and putting a ramp and getting that done, like I said, I know twenty-five hundred on roughly electric plus materials. And we haven't got a quote back on, from lock on materials, that's why we don't know the material cost. And then let Davey get that done hopefully as quick as we can, depending upon weather, because we're coming into that rainy season.
Three or four yards?
How big a pad?
I don't have any specs. I know I've talked to Davey about it, but we haven't got to that point yet of how far the approach. Main thing, we've had a conversation with making sure we got the footer poured first and timing in the building, I mean, this is, that's, this is way out of my area, so.
That's gotta be done.
Yeah.
Can't use it like it is.
Right.
Do you have a recommendation on who to use for concrete?
He, Mr. Davey can do it.
He's gonna do it?
Yes.
Actually himself and do all that?
Where to get concrete from, you know, we haven't talked that far. Who, I think that'll depend on price of who can actually drive it, from what I've been told, we pay a premium for the drive, drive time to get a truck here.
It's on the top.
I don't know that for sure.
We could get Alba or Woodbury maybe.
I'll make the motion to get them started.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number seven is personnel, A, is discussion of possible actions concerning superintendent travel schedule.
Obviously something that's not on here, since I found out about today, it's Friday, Friday's meeting at Oklahoma City, on the fifteenth. And then if we get approved, we won't have, I won't, I won't have to go and Michelle won't have to go the week of the twenty-sixth to twenty-ninth. That's just a one-day deal. I won't have to go there if we get ours approved. If we do, if we don't, then we have to attend back.
Crime, scene, investigation, chain?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, yeah. I think they could have chose a better acronym.
Yeah.
That joke's been made a few times now. You're not the first one.
I'm not the only one that picked it for me.
Yeah.
So it's, you got like one of the four days you can go to?
It's actually all five, but I've got a conflict on the twenty-seventh already. And there's something else on the twenty-seventh, I forgot what it was. Try to can we shoot every day? That's every, that happens pretty much every month, the last Wednesday of the month. April's is in Alba.
So these asterisks on the side says, will only attend one day?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you realize it wasn't an all-week thing, it was just one day, we just hadn't...
That's what I think he was asking, so you're going one.
I go one and I go one.
That's correct, yeah.
I go for days.
You good? No problem? We... We need to, motion to approve?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
One second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number two is acknowledge the board, acknowledge whether the board return to open session, I make the motion.
Nope.
That's right, I'm sorry. Eight forty-five, yeah. Executive session, minutes of hours announcements, another thing discussed was item B. Yes. I had no other thinking. See is discussion of possible action concerning the employees listed on appendix B for the two thousand nineteen, full year.
It's my recommendation that we re-employ the employees on appendix.
I'll make the motion that we take is...
Recommendation?
Recommendation, thank you. I got lost.
Is there a second?
One second. Wilson?
Yes.